Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, City Hall, January 3rd, 2023, at 4:30 p.m. I'll begin with the invocation, Pledge Allegiance. My turn, will everybody stand up? We'll begin our pledge. Reverse that, we'll just do this first. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. And now, we'll do our invocation. Dear the Father, we thank you for this year that we're beginning in 2023. I thank you for the people in our city, for our police, our fire, our Public Works, our neighborhood community services, our employees that take care of our city on a day in and day out. I thank you for their service, I thank you for their sacrifice, and I pray for their safety this coming year. I pray for the decision makers in our community, I pray for the leadership in our world, I pray for our communities as we continue to grow, we continue to prosper, and we continue to recover. I thank you so much for your blessings, in Jesus's name I pray, amen. Thank you, everybody. Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide a roll call?
Mr. Beasley Brown, here. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Peiragin?
Here.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Mayor Alcott?
Here. Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments at this time?
I have a couple, Mayor, thank you. First of all, I want to recognize a dear lady that's still working for us after 65 and a half years. Nice article in today's paper about Jean Hertz. She's our accounting specialist, technician over in finance, has been with us since 1957. The mayor and I had the honor of going over and the mayor presented her with a plaque of the key to the city last week. And Jean is, I think, 91 years old and still going strong. And a nice article in the paper today, and just want to recognize Jean for her 65 years of service to our city and community. And you won't find a more delightful lady to be around, and just a wonderful person and a dear friend of mine, and just a cornerstone of the Finance Department. So congratulations to Jean. She was not able to attend the December Awards Breakfast over at Convention Center, but she achieved her 65 years back in May of '22. So I want to recognize her, I haven't ever gotten the chance to do that, I want to do that tonight.
About we can do a round of applause.
Okay.
Congratulations, Jean, we know you're listening out there when you hear it.
If you get a chance, read Don Sargent's article in today's paper, very great, very good article, so. Secondly, just reminder if anybody in the audience wants to make public comments, make sure you sign up on the board in the back. And then finally, I'd like to ask Mr. Mark Iverson, General Manager of BGMU, to come up and make a presentation about the TVA winter blackouts, or whatever you want to call it, that occurred during the holidays, that everybody was wondering what was going on. So I've asked Mark to come up and explain what was going on and how they handled it. Mark?
Thank you, Jeff. And Mayor Alcott, Commissioners, City Manager, and City Staff, appreciate the opportunity to kind of speak to what's been referred to as Winter Storm Elliott, and I thought, give a little recap to that. Whoop, there we go, sorry. Little reminder maybe on the temperature variance, because that's really what drove this particular event. It certainly had a lot of wind associated with it, a little precipitation, but it was the temperature variance that really was the big part of this event. And so, on Thursday, it was a day kind of like today, in many ways, from a temperature perspective, at normal, maybe a little bit slightly above, but when the front came through, we had, in a relatively rapid fashion, a dramatic temperature change that lasted for a day and a half, two days. And even when we were coming out of it, it was still well below freezing. And so, we're going to see some effects on infrastructure outside of just the electric grid, but the primary focus tonight is to talk a little bit about the electric grid and what we had with respect to that. I would be remiss if I didn't really kind of point out some other public servants outside of the TVA event, well, I'll get there in terms of what happened with that. And I'm going to start with Public Works, because BGMU and Public Works has a lot of, we have a lot of interaction on a regular, ongoing basis. Their, you know, the Public Works Department, they're always cordial, timely, professional in our engagement with BGMU staff, and I really want to publicly thank them for that teamwork. But especially when you have events like this, as a taxpayer, as a citizen, you know, how they handle snow removal, salting, every storm event is unique in terms of its timing, and when they can apply salt, and when they can scrape and remove, and so they do a yeoman's job, I think they do an excellent job with that. BGMU also interacts many times with public safety, police and fire, and they do a great job also interacting. And those public servants are in the middle of events like this. It's cold, and so while we're in our own homes and kind of getting ready for the holidays, many public servants are right in the middle of an event like this. Of course, I would also be remiss if I didn't talk about our own employees. And so, Water Sewer Division, when the temperature gets like this, we get busy. So on a normal month, we can have anywhere from zero to four water main breaks that we're having to deal with during the course of a month. In the five-day period when this polar vortex kind of came in, we had 16 water main breaks that we were dealing with. And if you can imagine standing knee-deep in cold water, it's 20 degrees below zero, you've got water spraying on your face, and I think this one little video kind of shows a little bit of the operating conditions they find themselves in, you're soaking wet, that's a lot to ask of somebody to kind of do that in the middle of an event like this, but they do it all the time. And, but, you know, I'm extremely proud of our entire team, but the Water Sewer guys, when it gets to this, this is something that's, they knew they were going to get busy when we kind of saw the forecast. But it wasn't unique to just Water Sewer, the electric guys, this is a double, a pole and double spring, so ice and snow, people don't necessarily drive as well as they would at other times, the infrastructure gets in the way. And so, here on Christmas Day, they're out there repairing and replacing that pole. Again, it was cold and, you know, had all the conditions. I've said many times internally, but I'll kind of say it publicly, that it's not only the guys that are kind of working, their families are sacrificing, and they're heroes as well, in my eyes, because they get the disruption on Christmas Day, they're in the middle, they get the call out, and so their families are disrupted in terms of what they have to do as well. So, public servants, just holistically, so I'll obviously brag on BGMU, but I'll say that for the city as well, we just, they're invaluable to what we kind of provide to the general public. So let me talk a little bit about the events of the rolling blackout. And I think really, to kind of get there, some basics on how the electric grid operates might be helpful, because I think that really gives some context to understanding how TVA operates, and how BGMU operates, and what we had to do in this particular event. I hope not to offend anybody if I'm being overly simplistic, if you already know these things, but I have found over time, once you kind of explain it a little bit, it helps trying to really understand how it all operates. The first comment I have on there is, I can't think of anything else that we do in life that is produced and consumed simultaneously, but that's what happens with electricity. There is no inventory of electricity, and so it has to be done in balance. So, on the customer side, every time we turn on a light switch, we run the dishwasher, or the washing machine, the refrigerator operates, the refrigerator motor, your furnace runs, or your air conditioner runs, all that's electric load. So sometimes referred to as load, sometimes it's referred to as demand, and it's the generation side of electricity that has to follow that load. Whatever the customers are asking for, it's up to them to produce the electricity simultaneously to match that particular load. There are some times you might hear things like balancing authority, or a balancing desk, they're the ones who visually see what the demand curve is, the load curve is, and then they're the ones dispatching out generation units to match that. The operating parameters on the electric grid is a pretty narrow band, so it's not likely there's a lot of room and flexibility, because all the harmonics of frequency for generation, the grid voltage that it operates on is very thin. And so whenever you have imbalance, or any of those harmonics or grid voltages get out of balance, you can have a cascading failure. And think of Texas, a couple of winters ago, you had a polar vortex thing, went deep into Texas, their whole, they didn't have just rolling blackouts, they had an entire collapse of their electric grid, and then it takes days, almost up to a week, I think, in some cases, for them to kind of slowly rebuild the system, because the build back in still has to be in balance, still has to be in frequency, it's a, you don't want to find yourself in a collapsed grid. And so that's, that last point is probably the most, the first point and last point are really the most important things to kind of understand. As it relates to TVA, Tennessee Valley Authority, they are BGMU's GNT, or Generation and Transmission Authority, it's not Gen and Tonic, and they operate with us under a full requirements power contract. So everything we need, when I say we, holistically Bowling Green, it's their responsibility to match that, and under that full requirements contract. And TVA has an entire portfolio of generation units that actually meet that power load. So in this particular case, this is a picture of the new natural gas-fired unit in Mullenburg County. So TVA has 23 of these types of plants across the entire valley, and of those 23 plants, they have a total of 122 power units, generating units, at those, in those sites. And natural gas is becoming, increasingly becoming an important component of TVA's generation fleet. This is a picture of the Kingston Coal Plant. TVA has five remaining legacy coal plants, and they have 25 power generating units at those five sites. Lots of comments during our rolling blackouts that were talked about, you know, if we only had coal, we never had this issue, that's not really true. Of all the retired coal plants, most of those were built in the 50s and 60s, were well beyond their useful life, designed plan life, they're almost impossible to meet increasingly strident environmental regulations. But they still do have coal generation. A TVA operates three large nuclear plants, like this one at Watts Bar, Tennessee. The three sites have a total of seven generating power units, and nuclear power has been and will continue to be an important component in TVA's generation. TVA owns and maintains 29 hydroelectric dams in the Tennessee River Basin, and those dams have a total of 109 power generating units. In addition to the cheap, clean, and very flexible power generation, the dams serve as flood control, water supply, river navigation, and recreation. TVA also owns and operates a pumped hydro facility at Buffalo Mountain, just outside of Chattanooga. In addition to pre-arranged purchased power arrangements, TVA maintains a power trading desk where TVA can acquire day ahead or spot purchases of electric power. So it's an interconnected grid, not only within TVA, but all of TVA's surrounding utilities, that's sometimes referred to as the Eastern Interconnection. TVA owns and operates 14 solar sites, and has public purchase power arrangements with eight wind turbine sites, three utility-scale solar sites, and 4,000 small renewable contract arrangements. So it's a pretty diverse portfolio that allows them to match as the power requirements present themselves. Pretty busy schedule here, I'm really not wanting to kind of go over all these points, but rather to make an impression that there's a lot of variables that go into producing power. These are just some of the kind of major ones, but there's a minutia of even smaller types of things to think about. About two-thirds of the way down there, that fuel delivery and transmission pipeline consideration. A lot of things are contractually arranged, months in advance, and including things like, do I have firm arrangements for that capacity, pipeline capacity? So I've got a natural gas plant, I've got to make sure natural gas gets to that plant so that can operate it. Do I have firm transmission pipeline space, or am I just getting it as it becomes available? With firm arrangements, that has a price to it, but is, certainly is a big component in how you think about how you build this generation portfolio and how you operate So, a couple things outside of generation and wholesale market purchases that TVA employs to, in their portfolio, and how they go through this balancing. Again, generation has to match power demand from customers. This is probably the most important one, at least from my perspective, and that's called spinning reserves. So if you think about a power unit, this is inside of a hydroelectric dam, there's eight power generating units inside of there, those are big pieces of machinery. And if you can kind of see on this first one in the very foreground there, right underneath the kind of the big blue hat, if I can put it that way, there's a, it's lit up there, that space, there's a big shaft in there, and that's the shaft of the generator. Think about a generator, it's just magnets spinning around, and they produce an electric field, that's how it operates, that weighs a couple hundred tons, that particular unit. And so it's, if you need to produce electricity, it's not like you flip a switch and you're automatically producing electricity, it takes, in some cases, hours to get a unit up and operating. Even in a hydro plant, which is probably a little bit more flexible than anything else, to get 200 tons moving fast enough to produce electricity, it takes some time for that flowing water to push that turbine around and start producing electricity. If you're reacting to a condition, whether that's an increased demand, or a unit's tripped out, you've got to have something in the background kind of ready to operate, and that's called spinning reserves. So you'll, TVA will burn, or have fuel burning, or one of these hydro units spinning in the background, up and ready to go, that there, it would take just a matter of minutes for it to run, because they've already overcome the inertia of getting those turbines spinning. That's kind of the primary, in my view, really the primary thing of, in the background, if something trips out producing electricity, those reserves are ready to go. Outside of spinning reserves, TVA contracts with large industrial customers to interrupt their load, so if they have a condition that requires interruption, they pay them for that arrangement. So every month, and I don't mind to tell you, because they're a public entity, Western receives a credit on their power bill, because TVA has a contractual arrangement for them to interrupt their load if that was necessary, and that's all spelled out in that contract. There are other market-based demand products, but the one that kind of really is the one that we're kind of speaking of, that we recently dealt with, is the Emergency Load Curtailment Program. That Emergency Load Curtailment Program is one being developed between TVA and its local power companies like BGMU and Warren Real Electric. It was put in place years ago, jointly prepared by TVA and our association, the Tennessee Valley Public Power Association. We perform annual drills to make sure, and evaluations that make sure that that program operates as necessary. There's a multitude of steps, some of are preventative in nature, some of them are curtailment in nature. It first starts out with step 10, which is in-house load reduction. So before we ask the general public anything, we're cutting our own power requirements inside of BGMU, TVA's doing the same in their facilities, I can't tell you how many warm summer afternoons, it's been a little uncomfortable in the BGMU offices, but we do that first, before we ask the public for anything. The second is a general appeal to the general public, that would be step 20. Step 30 is a voltage reduction program, I'm not going to get into the details, but we basically step our system down to a kind of a lower threshold. And then when you get to step 40 and 50, that's what we experienced with this particular event, where you're asking large industrial customers, or the general public, we're having to kind of have a rolling blackouts curtailment. So how did we get here? Well, one other thing, so this is a picture of a graph that shows BGMU's system operating during this polar vortex, Winter Storm Elliott. The line in green starts up at the top at, it's actually 50 degrees, but the line in green is the temperature, so you can see the quick drop in temperature, and then the line in black is BGMU's demand on its system, and you can see the inverse, so temperatures dropping, you can see our increased load, as furnaces start to run, heat pumps, and the like. I would suspect a graph like that on an electric co-op, because they don't have as much natural gas heating as we do inside the city, that would be a much sharper upward graph for an electric co-op. I'm looking to Ernie, but I would suspect that would be the case. And so, it's that event that's creating the load demand, and it's up to then TVA to match that load demand with generation, to kind of match what the customers are looking for. The light tan color that you see in there, that's the step 30 call, when TVA said, can you step down the voltage in your system? And again, that's just a little thing, that little trick, we can kind of, we kind of have an operating range, we operate on the upper end of the voltage, we can step it down, and it helps TVA in their generation. The darker tan is the rolling blackout event, if you will, or two events, we had one on Friday, and we had one on Saturday morning, and that's kind of, you know, those are the events that we basically had to curtail through our circuits. So what happened? Friday morning, middle of the night, TVA lost some large generation, actually their two largest generating units. One was operating as the spinning reserve, and so when that spinning reserve tripped out, they had no margin. And that was a, an alarming condition to find yourself in while the temperatures were dropping, and so that was a scramble, we've got to kind of get something, kind of put together, a plan to put together here. And then within an hour or two of that, the second largest, or equivalently large unit that was generating power, also tripped out. Events unheard of within TVA's generation, and it quickly became an event that got us to step 40 and step 50, where we were having to curtail load within our customers. Now that comes back to the local power companies, like BGMU and Warren, who then have to, circuit by circuit, within our, kind of do 10-minute interruptions to customers, then go to the next circuit, and we just kind of moved around our system as we were operating in step 50. That was about a two-hour event on Friday morning. We had lots of conversations with TVA to kind of tell us what was happening, what they're seeing. We were anticipating that Saturday morning was also going to be kind of a tight environment, and in fact, it was. Part of that was driven not only by the generation issue, but then when you were purchasing power on the marketplace, and remember, this was a whole Eastern Seaboard thing, so those utilities themselves, that you might have been buying wholesale power from, even under contract, said, hey, we've got to keep that power for ourselves, we've got our own customer needs. And so, you found yourself behind the eight ball yet again. So that was a deeper, longer event on Saturday morning, until the temperature kind of went in our favor to kind of alleviate load. So that was about almost a six-hour event on Saturday morning. The takeaway, I hope that we can kind of, I apologize again to the general public that, you know, we found ourselves kind of in this spot, the interruption and inconveniences that we found ourselves, especially on Christmas Eve. Nobody likes to have to curtail load, and I don't work for TVA, but I know factually that that's kind of how they feel as well. But if events lead you there, that managed rolling curtailment is a much better condition to find yourself in than the alternative, which would be a collapsed, collapsing electric grid, because that's, that's what Texas experienced, you just never really want to find yourself there. I have given you kind of a copy of the, a industry report that was done at the polar vortex of 2014. Not to, and it's just kind of a version that I've taken a few selected pages, it's the index that kind of showed all the different types of trip conditions, why equipment failed. Not trying to say that those things are what happened within TVA, TVA's going to do its own analysis with respect to that, we'll get caught, we'll get a brief on that at some point later. But to give an appreciation for all the valves and gaskets and sensors, pipelines, and that, you know, all the things in a large piece of machinery that can fail, those are kind of examples of what happened in the polar vortex of 2014. I'm sure there's a similar kind of analysis that happened in Texas, this one will probably have its own analysis as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions with respect to how we got there, the events, how we managed through that. Ernie Peterson, I kept kind of pointing over here, Ernie Peterson, Customer Service Manager for TVA's here as well, if you've got some questions of him, we're both available to answer any that you might have.
I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Iverson, for kind of breaking it down, the public, you know, has access to be able to view this online at any time, and there are people watching this now, and it is informative. What I do appreciate most is that the customer service, you know, the Twitter feeds that were going out, information that was given out through our networks and Facebook, and it was very informative, and people knew what to expect, and they knew it was going to be infinitely long, and, you know, they knew that we're getting their fair dosage across the board, and I think most people in the Christmas spirit handled it very, very well. There were people irritated, but, you know, it's the necessity of being, living in a first world, that we're very lucky to have, you know, the power that we had when we had it, and the communication we had, so graciously, thank you.
Learned, you know, we're going to do our own internal analysis, what worked and didn't work, and how we managed through that, so, you know, lessons learned that will kind of come out of that, including communications, how, you know, how we could have done some of that a little bit better. You know, one of the things I remember, recall, some comments about, why couldn't you give us some heads up? Well, we're in the heat of the battle, if you will, it was really kind of hard to kind of anticipate exactly how that was going to play out.
But it didn't take long to understand.
Yeah.
If you wanted to understand it, the information was, became readily available. So, thank you. All right.
Just really quick, Mr. Iverson, from my understanding, is the temperature, if it's like 20 degrees, and once it reaches that, that actually alleviates it, that's the first thing. But the second thing, and this may be also for the TVA, if this happens again, because I remember when I was a kid, we actually didn't have a rolling blackout, but I lived over there by, closer to Parker Bennett, and I remember the electricity was off for a while, it was during '93 or '94, and we had a huge storm back then.
That was the Christmas Day, if I recall.
And it was cold.
So we've talked a little bit about, that was not TVA, that was a BGMU issue. We were, at that time, if I can kind of be honest about it, a little bit operationally weak, didn't have a very good situational awareness internally, because we kept saying, well, it's TVA, and, no, it's really on your side, and again, that gets back to the operational weakness, and then we only had one delivery point. And so at that one delivery point was where the failure was, on the BGMU side of that power delivery. We've pivoted, both in personnel, got a whole department that's substation, we have 24-hour dispatch that we didn't have at the time, we now have three delivery points. So I think we've kind of righted the ship of what it was like back in the early 80s. But the lesson learned from that is, that is a frequent reminder, Melinda's going to hear this during her orientation, because you never want to find yourself in that condition again. And so it is a lesson learned kind of thing that we repeat constantly about system reliability and operational strength. So, yeah, you're right, a lot of people remember that.
What can we do if something like this happens again, and there's a polar vortex that's affecting almost half the country? Is there anything locally that can be done?
Probably not a whole lot of local. Probably not a whole lot of locally, other than just trying to get people prepared. Again, I really hope we don't find ourselves in this spot again. And part of that will be just what has TVA learned internally of how those units tripped out, and what can they do to prevent that? You know, they go through a whole deep analysis, not only this polar vortex of 2014, the Texas event. I think Ernie had kind of spoken to what they did internally preparing for this particular event because of what happened in Texas. But you always get surprised. Now, let Ernie speak.
I sat there as long as I could. I'm sorry. I've spent a career explaining the electric system to folks, and I don't know that I've ever done it as well as Mark just did there. And so I may need to take him around with me to more places. But ultimately, we've been operating for ninety years, and this is the first time we've got to this spot. And there was a perfect storm event, if you will, that kind of got us here. We're going to learn lessons from this, and we'll do everything. The last thing anybody wants to do is cut your power off, especially on Christmas and all of that. So we're working hard to learn some lessons here. We don't, we won't try to be here again in the next ninety years. But if we do, what the idea is, is stay tuned, listen in for instructions, directions around what you can do to conserve your electricity during these times. And BGMU does a great job, and Warren as well, a great job of communicating what needs to be done. And if you'll just kind of listen into that, do that, I think we'll be in a good spot. But ultimately, let me say from TVA, we're going to come back with more details. We're still studying this. We're still trying to learn exactly what got us to where we're at on all of this. But let me say thank you to all of those who did take action this time around. It did prevent some things that would have been much worse than a fifteen or thirty-minute outage. And I just want to take a moment to say thank you for all those and for the folks, the industry as well as the individuals. What they did made a real difference at the time the event was going on. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Just want to follow-up question. In terms of, you know, that balance and thinking about, you know, the usage and bringing that down, I definitely was worried about those who are living in our mobile home parks and, you know, places that are not very well insulated, some of our older homes, and how quickly those, with those negative temperatures, how quickly those were very cold. And so just checking in in terms of with this new infrastructure funds hopefully coming to our community, are we going to see some more weatherization programs to help our community, particularly those who are really vulnerable in their homes to extreme weather events? And whether they lose power in the heat of summer or when it's really cold, how do we make sure, you know, what can we expect to help on this, you know, making it, reducing the load by our usage together by weatherizing, but also helping to protect these vulnerable community members who are in less insulated housing?
Yeah, great question, of course. And we do have some existing programs that BGMU and others participate in to help with energy efficiency. But I only see that growing in the future, as you mentioned, with some of the funds and the different things, grants and opportunities that we've got coming our way over the next year or so. I expect all of those programs to grow even bigger than they are today.
Great, thank you.
Thank you both. No more questions. Appreciate it, Mr. Iverson. Appreciate it, Ernie. Jeff, do you have any more?
I'll have mayor, thank you.
All right. Our first item is approval of minutes, regular meeting, December twenty, twenty-two.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Any questions? None. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Municipal Order Number Twenty Twenty-three dash one.
Municipal order, electing Sue Perigin as Mayor Pro Tem.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. This is one that I, in recognition of how our board has done this in the past, is the commissioner that received the most votes from our elected population. And again, this is Sue, so congratulations to that. And congratulations to each of you all for serving this year. And I look forward to the next two years of serving with you and appreciate the past two years that we served together. But I'd like to nominate Sue in this position, and I think she served me well as a pro tem. I tried to use you as a pro tem, as I said I would, and I hope you felt that, so.
Absolutely. I want to say thank you to the population that voted for all of us. Here we are back, the same crew, so you can, you can, you know, expect more of the same and growth and development and good decisions and minding the money and those kinds of things. And I'm happy to step in when the mayor's unavailable. And proud to serve as Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you.
Thank you. You did a great job, Sue. And a lot of people know, you know, city manager is the person that runs the city on daily basis, but the mayor gets a lot of calls and gets asked to attend a lot of events, and it's impossible to do. And I do believe in divide and conquering, and I do believe in leadership and always having a number two ready at any moment, because my day tomorrow is not guaranteed, just like all of us. So appreciate that. And without that, unless there's any further questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
I better abstain.
No, you don't have to. You don't need to. Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Sue. Municipal Order Number Twenty Twenty-three dash two.
Municipal order, approving the appointment of Commissioner Carlos Bailey to the Bowling Green Audit Committee and Housing Authority of Bowling Green.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. This is one I've talked to Carlos. He's taken on a new role, and that is the Audit Committee, and he's going to continue his role in the Housing Authority. These are two vital positions that are required. And you'll hear sort of some repetitive here. These next boards, we are required to have city commissioners to represent several of these boards. And we can't just nominate citizens for all the boards. We have citizens that do that role, but we have commissioners that give oversight, leadership, and to bring their wisdom and their collective basis from their voting members that brought them to that position. So Carlos, I appreciate you willing to serve on both these and the Audit Commission as well. So thank you very much.
Mayor, I appreciate it as well. You know, also appointed me to a new board and trusted me to be on another board and stuff for our committee. So it's been a learning experience, especially for you and I, when we were the new guys on here for the last two years. But being able to learn and grow is always something good. And I look forward to working with everyone on this board. And I believe that we, as a Board of Commission, even though there was a pandemic, the city has been stable and has grown to even better than what it was before. So I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Carlos. All right. Any further questions, comments? None. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey. You don't, you don't need to.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right. Congratulations, Carlos. Municipal Order Number Twenty Twenty-three dash three.
Municipal order, approving the appointment of Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown to the Bearin River District Health Board and Job Development Incentive Program Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All right. That was moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Dana, I appreciate you willing to serve on both these boards continuous. Many people don't know, we all serve on the Convention Center Committee Board as well. So it's a third board that's required as commissioners that we serve on once a month in this chamber. But thank you, Dana, for your continuous service. All right. Any further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right. Congratulations, Melinda. Municipal Order Number Twenty Twenty-three dash four.
Municipal order, approving the appointment of Commissioner Melinda Hill to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board and Job Development Incentive Program Committee.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown. I'd like to thank Melinda for serving on this. She also served previously on the Audit Board. She is going to take a new role, and that's the BGMU Board. And Mr. Iverson, you're getting a great person to serve in that. I've enjoyed serving on that the past two years. I have learned so much by learning things that are well beyond my comprehension. But Mr. Iverson, you always do a great job of breaking it down and helping us understand that. And I know Melinda appreciate you willing to serve on that and wish you well on that.
Thank you.
All right. No further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Melinda. Municipal Order Number Twenty Twenty-three dash five.
Municipal order, approving the appointment of Commissioner Sue Perigin to the Bowling Green Warren County Drug Task Force and Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority, Inc.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Sue, these are two boards that I know you hold dearly because you covet these. And I envy you because one day I would like to be able to do this, but as the mayor, the mayor also gets appointed to three boards. The RDAs, the Regional Development Authority, comes with the territory, gets to the MPO, and the Police and Firemen Pension Board. I thoroughly enjoy serving on those, but it's one that comes with the mayor's job. And so again, you have to divide and conquer, and we are doing that as a commission here tonight. So I congratulate you on your continuous service on these boards, Sue. All right. No further questions or comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Sue. All right. Municipal Order Number Twenty Twenty-three dash six.
Municipal order, authorizing and accepting the number Twenty Twenty-three Twenty-nine for Cisco Network Switches from Trace Three LLC of Irvine, California, in the amount of one hundred, seven thousand, three hundred, fifty-eight dollars and ninety cents.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
We are in need of replacing some Cisco Network Switches. These are outdated, and this was in your FY twenty-three budget. The issue or the challenge is the supply chains. We got to get these things ordered. These things are taken over a year to get, I think, right, Danita, with the lead time? So before you tonight is municipal order, we got one bid on these that we opened up on December twenty-first, and that was from the Trace Three LLC. We've done business with this company before out of Irvine, California. Cost of these seven Cisco brand network switches is one oh seven, three fifty-nine-ish. And Danita Weeks is here, IT Director, answering any questions you might have on this purchase.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Any questions, comments?
I just wanted to thank IT Director Weeks. Just in the memo, it mentioned how you had thought of a creative way to bring down the cost and save the taxpayers almost fifty thousand dollars on a hundred thousand dollar purchase. And that's, I'm just grateful that as a public servant, you know, you're always thinking about ways that we can make sure we're being responsible with our taxpayer dollars. And just really appreciate your consistent and creative ways that you find ways to help us do that. So just thank you.
Great comment. Other? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number Twenty Twenty-three dash seven.
Municipal order, authorizing and accepting the number Twenty Twenty-three Twenty-eight for equipment and upfitting for police vehicles from Dana Safety Supply, Inc. of Nashville, Tennessee, in the amount of eighty-six thousand, one hundred, eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
We've got some police Dodge Chargers that need upfitting with all the equipment. We went out for bid and got three quotes, three bids. Lowest bid, this is straight, straight low cost, came from Dana Safety Supply. I believe they're located in Nashville, Tennessee, so they're relatively local. There is no one in Bowling Green that can do this kind of work, but we're recommending Dana Safety Supply for eighty-six, one eighty-seven to outfit, upfit, whatever you want to call it, the, I think there's eight twenty-two Dodge Chargers that we recently received. Chief Delaney is in the room, can answer any questions you might have on this one. Low cost is with, again, Dana Safety Supply.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Is this work that was previously done in-house, or was this always external?
We have done this in-house before, but we no longer have the staffing personnel that can get this volume out that we need quickly. So, Chief, you have anything to?
Yeah, Keith retired, he's been part-time worker now, but with the amount of crews, when we get behind, when we get behind with all the crews, we purchased a lot of vehicles. I have to know that a lot of people can't get vehicles. After we started getting vehicles in, we're getting eight to ten at a time. And with Keith just doing part-time work, we had vehicles setting for, you know, a long period of time, so we started outsourcing this.
So Keith retired fully, and he's come back part-time?
Part-time worker.
I understand. And it's a full-time?
It's more than a full-time job. It was more than a full-time job probably before, just for Keith, but he was doing them before, and we felt it was better to outsource to get those vehicles out and get use of them faster.
Copy. Thank you.
Have you all ever looked in the trunk of one of the police chargers? You should.
Pretty full.
Lot of stuff in those cars, so.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive.
Lot of work.
All right. Thank you both. Commissioners? All right. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number Twenty Twenty-three dash eight.
Municipal order, accepting the Intermodal Transportation Authority, Inc. Financial Statements, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So as you all know, as part of the two GO bond issues that the city's done for the ITA, we require a review and approval of their annual budget and their audit. Before you tonight is their FY twenty-two audit, which provided a clean opinion. You'll see that in the first couple of pages. Sue and I sit on the ITA board and have seen and heard this presentation from the auditors. I'd like to commend Meredith Rozansky, who's here with us tonight, for her, all her hard work that she does with the ITA and providing clean financial statements and making sure everything is in order for the ITA for that development up there. And she's here, can answer any questions you might have on this. Just a few highlights, FY twenty-two was a very busy year, as you know, up in the trans park, and really good audit in front of you tonight. Revenue's increased about two, two-point-six million dollars. And Meredith can take it from here if you have any questions, or do you want to give a, do you have some prepared?
I was just going to let you know, at the beginning of the audit, when you get past the opinion letter of the auditors, there is a management discussion and analysis that I write every year that's more layman's terms of kind of what happened throughout the year. So I would encourage you to peruse that. But really, just want to give a quick synopsis of what do all these number changes mean? Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year was very busy, or twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two was a very busy year for us. We had two purchases, so we had two hundred and thirty-two acre purchase from the Ritchie family, which is now going to be part of the Envision project. And then also a one-acre parcel that was the Fishburne home that was sort of in the middle of that Ritchie property. And then we had seven sales. So the Fruhoff project that we announced, which was twelve million dollars and two-hundred-and-eighty-eight So the Fruhoff project that we announced, which was $12 million and 288 jobs, we sold them 17 acres in addition to the property they purchased so that they would have storage space and parking area. And we sold 12.7 acres to Harbor Steel for their new facility in the park, and sold 35 acres to Premier Development, who's building a very large speculative building out there, and donated 25 acres to the VA. So I think pretty much every elected official in the state was at that groundbreaking. Very exciting, long-term, long time coming. 69 acres to Tyson Foods, 17 acres to Dominion Commercial Assets, who also built a 200,000 square foot speculative building. And then we sold some right away to the Department of Transportation along 31W because they're going to widen from 6880 to the entrance of that. Also, there's, related to the $40 million bond that the city and the county are jointly funding, we spent almost $16 million worth of infrastructure funding for the roads and the utilities to serve these projects and the ones that are coming. So an unprecedented year as far as the number of land transactions that we had, and this doesn't even count the negotiations that we had for Towgag, which we closed on in November of this year. And then this month, January, we will close with Envision and OI Glass on their property. So tons of activity, we're super excited, really leaning on our TBA partners. Big loads coming on, and so we're super excited about the amount of activity that this report represents. But I'm happy to answer any specifics that you have on any of the numbers of the reports, I just didn't want to spend too much of your time.
Was Tyson in that also?
Yes, Tyson 69 acres. So that was a $355 million project and 451 jobs, so.
I want to echo what Jeff said, it's, it's really incredible serving on that board and watching what, what work goes into these economic development snags, I'd say. You know, I mean, my goodness, they're, they're years out, and some of them are only months. I mean, they're, they're, it's really incredible, the process and, and how well that, that this economic development machine that we have works together and lands these projects and gets these projects, and then, of course, we have the power, has to be ramped up and, and, you know, it's just really, really good for our community, this kind of growth.
And we, we could not be successful without the city and the county, and the fact that you guys, you know, had a vision many, many years ago to do this. But when you look at during the pandemic, because we actually wrote this up and won an award for this, is we doubled the size of the trans park, so we added over 900 acres and we filled it in about 18 to 24 month period of time, which it took us sort of 20 years to do before. So that was just a whole lot of activity at a time when, you know, when the pandemic hit, I think we all kind of went, okay, we'll just wait for a little while and see what happens. And it was, it was, it's been an incredible ride, but we could not have done it without your support. And time and time again, with the different projects coming to you, asking for help, and it'll be amazing for this community.
It's called momentum, and I don't see it ending anytime soon.
We've got five more right now that want to come, so.
So how much acreage? How much acreage do we have left, since most of it's been?
Total acreage left is, well, undeveloped, is about probably 150 acres. But 100 of that is below the CSX rail, below Bowling Green metal forming, and it's, if you've been out there, it's topographically challenged. So it will not be inexpensive to develop or inexpensive to get utilities to.
The 50,000 of good land.
50 acres of good land, yeah.
Yep, yep, 50.
Constantly looking to buy more.
Yes, yes. So that's super exciting.
Yes. Always on the lookout for more, so if you hear of a deal, let me know.
Well, this is fantastic to hear this continuous news. Meredith, your, your work has been incredible. We are so proud of our chamber. The work that you've told us and has come, and you have actually shown that over and over and over, the amount of trips that the governor's made here has been a result, and, you know, entire nation in Kentucky's watching what's happening in Bowling Green, and you all know, at the chamber, the force multiplier, and we are so proud of the work that has happened this year. Thank you.
And I don't think we want to lose sight of the fact that Melinda was at the beginning of this as director and paid employee that really got this thing going, and, and Mike Buchanan, and, and a lot of elected officials from back in that day. You know, we, we're standing here reaping the rewards that these people actually worked for.
It's kind of funny to think back of how controversial it was in the beginning, and now it's the premier park that the state touts is what other communities should build, so.
Funny how those things work.
It's painful to be a visionary.
It's funny how those things work. It's like the convention center, you know? Controversial, and then it's so important.
Right. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Commissioners, all right, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2023 dash one is our first reading and is non-binding.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number two to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
Each year, we have to make adjustments to our budget, and this is our second budget amendment we're coming to, to you with tonight. In it contains several grants that have come, come up in the last couple months. Our ARPA money that we have distributed to various projects, and the opioid settlement is in here, and just need to make these adjustments to our FY23 budget. And Katie can answer any questions or, or give you more of a detailed highlights, if you want them, but this is our second amendment for the year, and second reading will be next, next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Commissioners, do you have any questions this time? Okay, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2022 dash 63 is our second reading's binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 0.5712 acre from MHP Mobile Home Park and LI Light Industrial to LI Light Industrial located at Zero Kinbell Boulevard, presently owned by Reed Street Investments, LLC.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. This was a 5-0 vote at the last commission meeting. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments at this time? None, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2022 dash 64, second reading's binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 16.21 acres from AG Agriculture to RM3 Townhouse Multi-Family Residential located at Zero Russellville Road, presently owned by Wabak Development Company, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. This was also a 5-0 at the last commission meeting, unless there's any questions, comments? None, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Our next scheduled meeting's going to be January 17, 17th at 2023, 4:30. Commission, Mrs. Jackson's checking for public comments. Mrs. Moreland?
Yeah?
I'll, I'll remind you, you have five minutes, up to five minutes.
That's all I need.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for doing that for salvation on me. That was huge, what you did.
It was commissioned, commissioned.
The commissioners, but the mayor. Does anybody know what metro is? Nobody?
Yeah, be more specific.
Metro is kind of like city that they can get much grants if they're metro. So if you look that up and study it and just ask yourself, why do you think why this town is not metro? So, but I am trying to improve transportation. Do you know that the transit does not go to Job Junction? Does anybody know what Job Junction is? Nobody? What it is, it's an organization that Goodwood has, and it helps people find jobs. But nobody can get there because those buses won't go to Job Junction, and that doesn't make sense. They used to have a bus, they quit. Then on top of it, last time they did Saturdays, and that helped people, but they won't do Saturdays anymore. I have no idea why. Okay, I looked up grants that they can apply for, for transportation. Here it is right here. All right, thank you, Jennifer. There is a lot of grants for transportation. There's a lot more grants if you're metro. So, and I, I really do believe that people need to go in the transit and talk to them and reason with them, tell them what we need better transportation. That's agreed.
All right, thank you.
So if I research this, what it means is anybody can do this. Anybody, if I can do it, anybody can, okay? That's the reason why I ran for city commissioner, to teach everybody they have the right to fight, you know? And even if the transit kicks me off, I will still fight because we need better transportation. We need that, you know, and that's all I'm asking. I'm asking for somebody to call the transit and say, wait a second, why aren't you going to Job Junction? It doesn't make sense.
That was not for you.
I don't know who that was.
An inverted phone.
So that's all I want to say.